The July 16, 2024 Committee of the Hall, the time is 6:31 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We will need a roll call to establish a quorum that is physically present. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano's absent. Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
With five present and two absent, there is a physical quorum. And at this time, there is a request from Alderman Budd Matts, who was prevented from attending the meeting in person this evening due to item I1, personal illness or disability, and has requested to attend the meeting remotely pursuant to section 2-114 of the city code. So as such, at this time, I would like to call for motion to permit Alderman Budd Matts to attend this evening's meeting remotely. Is there such a motion?
Motion to allow.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler.
Second.
And thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion regarding allowing Alderman Budd Matts to join this evening? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With five in favor and unopposed, Alderman Budd Matts is permitted to attend remotely. At this time, Alderman Budd Matts will be able to participate in the meeting in the same capacity as those members physically present and will be called and counted for any vote taken during the meeting. Alderman Budd Matts, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's YouTube channel. We don't have any signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening for either item, so we will jump right into our items for the Committee of the Hall. And the first is regarding payments and resident access, and to that I will defer to Finance Director Tockington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're going to talk about payments from resident access here at the city. Oh, there's that technical snafu. I need to turn it on. Got it. Our current environment, we use Tyler Technologies, and this is what we call an enterprise resource planning software, so it's supposed to, you know, support all of the operation activities in the city. And we're really focused on accepting payments, and how do we do that? We do it in person, online, you know, the electronic, automatic payments, and so we do that kind of through multiple venues right now. It's all part of, two are part of the Tyler software world, and one, we have a separate processor we use through the state of Illinois. So cashiering, this is where you come into finance, we come in, you pay a check, cash, credit card, whatever you do right at the front desk, that's through our cashiering system, or a module of our software. That does use a third-party processor, so we're paying for another vendor to process kind of those credit card electronic transactions. Citizen self-service, and these are kind of the typical things that are accepted this way. I didn't list every single item we take for payment. So that's typically citizen self-service, your utility bills. If you go online, you sign in, you can do it through the ACH, where it's the electronic funds transfer monthly, or you can put a, you know, you can go do the credit card payments. That is in that citizen self-service module. This module is also a Tyler module with a third payment, a third-party payment processor, but this module, they're going to kind of end of life, that module in 2025. And then the third way we do it is the state of Illinois E-Pay. This is more typical for our local taxes, but also at some points, we've had community development payments on there. Now, the state of Illinois does charge a 3% convenience fee that stays with the state of Illinois, so whenever you go through E-Pay, you are paying convenience fee to the state of Illinois, and they are also the ones that process the payment. So right now, using cashiering citizen self-service by, we absorb the fees for the electronic payments in the cashiering and citizen self-service world, our Tyler technologies, and so far from June 2023 to May of '24, we've absorbed just short of $90,000 in those processing fees. So we look at our payment volume. This excludes E-Pay, because remember, that's through the state of Illinois. Here's kind of our breakdown. We do see a lot of online community development transactions, but if we look at the total, you have the utilities, you can pay at the cashier, the auto-pay, online, generals, kind of other payments that we take, right? So in total, from that same time period, we have just short of 30,000 transactions, which is almost $4.7 million. But the average transaction is more typical of really what a four-person household is, about $161. So resident access, what this is, is a new module of Tyler, right? It's changing the name to be a little bit more friendly, right? Resident access kind of give you a better idea of what the software, that module is supposed to be. But it'll really be taking that citizen self-service that's going away, and then taking E-Pay so we can limit our use, right? And we eliminate the use with the state of Illinois E-Pay, and rolling into everything we collect in those two worlds to the resident access. And then payments is really getting rid of that third-party processor and turning that into our payment, so it'll be also in the Tyler system. It'll become part of more, you know, more integrated with Tyler. So resident access really is kind of a better look and feel. It's more typical of what you see out there when you go onto other payment portals. It also allows you, so right now, if you go into citizen self-service, you can only pay your utility bill if you have a login. You have to have a balance, so like if you wanted to go in because you know the bill's coming, you're going out town and your balance is zero, there's no way to prepay anything. Or if you want to pay your utility bill and you have a permanent fee to pay, you have to pay them separately. So resident access allows us with the payments to have the ability to do multiple payments at once, so you're not always so isolated into different systems to go in and pay. You can just log into one. You also have the option to do it one time where you don't need a login, and this will also give us the ability to look at accepting e-checks or payment apps, so like Zelle, Venmo, PayPal, some of those other features. But part of this, getting more, kind of more efficient in what we're doing for collections and trying to be a little more receptive and making it easier for residents to pay, is looking at how much should we pay in that processing fee? So like I said at the beginning, we're about $90,000 for a year in what we've been paying to accept electronic payments. So with the change from citizen self-service and E-Pay to moving on to resident access with that payments, is do we look at recapturing that process fee for electronic payments from the end user? So the payments that go through E-Pay are residents and, you know, contractors, people that are coming here to use services that we provide are used to paying a 3% fee, the convenience fee already, but that goes to the state of Illinois. It's a little more typical practice for private companies. You can see, I know around town, we have some, if you pay cash, it's one. If you pay credit card, they'll add on the fee, so you're seeing that become more typical and more standard in private. And a lot of our comparable communities are charging a convenience fee or are right where we're at and looking to consider whether or not they should have one. And really, this is a little bit more consistent with our city's fiscal stability goals, right? We're looking to how do we stabilize our funds and where do we spend money in different ways? So can we, you know, pass this processing fee onto the end user? But we have kind of a caveat. We still want an ability for people to pay without a processing fee, right? Because we do have vulnerable parts of our population. So the convenience fee recommendation is really those that were already on E-Pay, the payment types that were there. When we bring them over to resident access, we'll continue with the 3% transaction fee. Expand that 3% transaction fee to all other electronic payments, but we have some exceptions. If we implement the e-checks, we'll reduce that to 1.5% convenience fee, and we would not charge people that come to our front window or, you know, drop, you know, checks aren't one, but, you know, using their Dropbox. There's an ability for those vulnerable populations to find a way to come and pay, especially the utility bills. Because who we typically see at our window are seniors and kind of low-income households, and they're the ones that come in and tend to pay in person. And so we don't want to give the convenience fee when they've made the effort to come to City Hall. So this is a way, if they still had to pay with an electronic payment, that they could come to the front window and there wouldn't be the convenience fee. So the convenience fee is really if you want to stay at home and pay it electronically and not make the effort to come to the city, that we would have the convenience fee for that. But if you come into the city, we'd still have the ability to allow you to make a payment with an electronic payment, but not incur a convenience fee. So really, council direction tonight is, do we proceed with the implementation of resident access and payments? And then would you like the city proceed with the implementation of convenience fees as we just referenced it?
Thank you, Director Tockington. And regarding the first point before we open this up to the council, what would be the alternative, given that the current module is being sunset in the year 2025?
So we could stay on the module. They still allow you to use it. Tyler does. They will no longer do upgrades or enhanced maintenance, right? We would get it as-is. If something fails, we'd have to come and make a decision on what we do then, right? So you would have kind of the risk of if citizen self-service failed, well, we no longer take online payments for utility bills, because that's really the portal for that, and we'd have to come up with a different solution. So right now, resident access, is there a different solution?
Thank you. All right, with that, is there, are there any questions or comments from the council, starting with Alderman O'Brien and then Alderman Boucher?
Thank you, Mr. Mooka. Couple of questions here. If I'm looking at right at your slide three, are we talking roughly 11,000 online transactions per year? About 504 community development, 10,740. So we're really talking about 11,000 transactions? That are, would incur this fee?
Yes, for the straight online. The, well, actually, because that's the online payment, but if you do the auto-pay, it's also an electronic that would be included.
So it's roughly, that makes almost 25,000. Okay, because that's where I'm struggling is, I'm not a big fan of these service fees. I just had to renew my license plate registration and it's 151 bucks plus, I think it's a $9 fee, because they clearly said they have outsourced their collections to another agency now. So I can't remember if it was online or if you did it when you got your emissions test passed too. Somebody was outsourced someplace else, so they now said it's a 950 convenience fee. I struggle with this. When we saw the numbers, thank you for that, that's a full-time staff position. I mean, we're talking 90 grand. That could be a new public works person, fire, police, that could be a new staff member that we have here. But what I'm struggling with too is it's also a cost of doing business. Is, I cringe, I don't know how my peers feel, I know how friends and family feel, I cringe because everybody's gone to that direction, and when I see, oh, it's a service fee, I cringe at that, so that's where I'm stuck. I'm looking to how my peers feel, as I really do truly believe it's a cost of doing business, that we should absorb it as the city. But when it's almost $90,000, that's also a staff head as well. I guess one question I have before my last comment. I, I know a little bit enough to be dangerous about this. Is it a percentage of the transaction, the merchant charges? So we'd still be making something up, because the little bit that I know about this, if it's a $500 charge, they, the credit card company or the processor will take 3%. So if we take, we tack on 3%, they're taking 3% now of $515. Is that correct? So we'd still be, it would be drastically reduced if we collected a service fee, but we would still be fronting, which I'm not opposed to, because it's percentage-based. Is that right? Or is it a flat $2 for every swipe of a credit card?
It depends on the electronic payment. So credit card is more, as you said. So e-checks, if we do that, it's actually $1.95 per e-check.
Okay.
So it depends on the payment mode, which charges which. So there's going to be some, I think, averaging out between the electronic payments on maybe one, we recover a little bit more, but the other we might lose a little, like if the, depending on the amount of the e-check, you know, there,
Sure.
we may actually lose.
Right.
And still pay to the processor more than we collected, because here's a percentage and there's a $1.95 per e-check. So it's more of a blending of the payments.
Okay. Thank, and I, thank you, Mayor. But just my last thought is, I mean, I know we're all going to give a lot of thought to this. I'm almost feeling that we've got to be real conscientious of it. To me, I'm still seeing it as a cost of doing business versus like a tech, because we're going to be talking property tax levies here shortly too, and I know we're having staff work with about a 1% increase to property tax for the 2025 budget. We, I was fully supportive and I still will. Refuge rates had to go up, water rates had to go up because we haven't in so many years. I think my peers know how I stand on that, is those, those costs just had to be, they go up, is over the course, because our rates went up to get water from the city of Chicago, for an example. That's where I'm struggling, is we rightfully so reduce those. I think this is one we may be able to continue to absorb as a cost of doing business, or do we consider a 1.5 property tax level increase versus another item here? Because just probably par for the course, I would come in right down the street, I would pay in person to not pay the convenience fee, because I think they're crazy, but would that then dictate more staff time that's needed? If we suddenly had 2,600 or 25, I'm sorry, 25,000 residents showing up to pay in person, what could that be? I don't see it happening, but this is a tough one. This is a good discussion as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Boucher.
I'm kind of in the same boat. Millennials and younger don't have checks, so this is the easiest and only way most people my age or younger pay for things. So to say, because I'd have to go get cash or I'd have to have a check, and I like to do it from home and I set up, I'm hearing it all the time that water went up, that garbage went up, comm ed went up, even though it wasn't, like, people are feeling like we're kind of nickel and diming them for me to come back and say, you're set up on auto-pay and then you don't have checks, but now we're going to charge you 3% more on your water bill. I think people have kind of hit their saturation from us saying it's the cost of doing business. I just don't know if I can go back again and say, cost of doing business, it's going to cost you more, or you're going to have to come in, and people paid that last week. I've come in just to come in that last week, and the line's already long of people paying their water bill. If people are feeling like, I just don't want, I mean, it's, if your bill's 150, we're not talking a ton of money, it's the principle of the matter, that's going to meet more people, more time downstairs, and people are going to be upset that they're standing in line to pay, to not have to pay the convenience fee. I just, I agree with Alderman, right? I just, this is a fee, I just don't know if I can push back with my residents on it.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Boucher. Before we open this back up, I also want the council to consider that this is not a convenience fee that the city is imposing. This is a fee that's already being paid, and it's about who's paying it. So right now, the residents are paying, whether it's associated proportionally with their specific bill and our businesses, all of the, all of the users of our utilities, for example, and all businesses that utilize community development require permits. So this is being paid actually across more users than it would a property tax, because some of these items are being paid by those who aren't residents in the community, but are still participants in our community. So this is actually a larger net than if we were to pursue a property tax. Something else I want the council to consider is that because it's proportional, so we're not doing this by transaction, it's a, it's a percentage, and while the average transaction is provided here from Director Tockington, we also have individuals who have utilities from when we had our water study, who have thousands and thousands of gallons of water, and that percentage is going to be primarily on them for a larger quantity than it would for a typical resident. So I just want the council to consider that. So as Alderman O'Brien brought up, when we are nickeling and diming, it gets to actually a full-time position, right? So, and that's still going to be a service ultimately to the entire community. So when we're thinking about this particular decision to say, well, we can aggregate this amount of money and utilize it for something else, or we can aggregate that money and pay it to a credit card company. So, so I just want to make sure that the council's considering that perspective too. Alderman Budd Matts, did you have any comments on the phone before we open this back up to the physically present quorum?
I agree with you. The city shouldn't be bearing the cost for the very large users who are benefiting by using their credit cards in this way, but I really don't want to see citizens who come up to the desk and pay with a check or pay with a credit card and have to pay any fees. So I'm good with having people pay the fees if they're getting convenience of doing that from wherever that is, other than City Hall. If they're doing it from their house or their computer or wherever, but if they're coming into City Hall, I want to, I want to make sure that they're not paying any additional fees for that, because it's not, it's not convenient to come to City Hall. They're, they're doing that and they're paying it, and they should be entitled to pay without any additional fees. Definitely.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for staff from the council? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor. So when they do the convenience fees, currently, if it's going to the state, then to take it in our things is like a gain for us, not necessarily break even, right?
Sort of, right? So the, the gain would be if those payments stayed with the state and we took the 3%. But what will happen is the payments are going to shift to us taking the payment, so now we're going to incur the processing fee, which, with it at the state, they paid the state, the state occurs, incurs the processing fee, they keep the 3%. So now, what I'm recommending is we get rid of E-Pay altogether and we use resident access for those items. So now the city will take that payment, we will incur the processing fee, but then if they paid with an electronic method, not at City Hall, we would then turn around and charge a percentage.
Okay, so let me break out a couple where this money ends up going for processing. The credit card companies have a fee themselves for using the credit card for every transaction that occurs, correct? What is that percent? Do we know?
So we're closer to like 2.93%.
For, for the credit card? And then there's another fee that we have to pay just to process that?
Right, so you get charged for the transactions that come in. So right now, we're less than a quarter. But switching to Tyler and the new processing way, we will increase to less, to about 45 cents.
Okay, so we got those two different things, one for the processing side of it, and one to the credit card to manage the credit side of it. Those are two separate things. I am with the other council members in that I hate the convenience fee, because I always think I'm making it more convenient for you to accept my credit card, because it all runs through the system without anybody touching it. But to have to have staff downstairs to manage this is an expense for us. And, you know, I, there are people, including some of my own family, who will say, okay, I'll go stand in line and I'll make them wait and I'll drag out the time and, and add to their inconvenience, which isn't good for us, to encourage people to say, we're going to go another way. Most transactions that I've seen have another option that says, if you're going to use an e-check or use, take it directly from your bank account or a debit card, there is no fee. And so I would like to see that option available to them, because if it's debit or check, that gives them the option to say, okay, I'm making it convenient for you and you're not charging me. And I'm not sure the banks charge a fee for that processing either, so they, we don't have the cost associated. I don't know. But is there a cost of processing an e-check?
I don't know exactly, but I know we pay, you know, bank fees in general. So I can look, see what that would be.
Yeah, so I'm trying to keep the cost down. I know you're going to aggravate our citizens with the convenience fee, even though they're paying it now. Everybody who's done work with the state of Illinois, every time I do that, I'm get aggravated and say, I'd rather just go to your office and make you spend your time and waste resources on processing this, which I don't know if we want to encourage that. We want to encourage them to use the most convenient, effective way for us without making them feel like I'm being penalized to do that. So let's think about that and let's see if we can have an option in there that there's no fee if you use e-checks or debit cards.
Yes, Alderman Phil.
Are debit cards subject to the same credit processing fee? As a credit card, like a debit and a credit? I mean, I know that.
I'm going to double check on what we, what the new processor would charge us and just on, and how it would go through. So I'll look it back on the debit card specifically.
I don't have a problem with charging the fee to do it from my home. They're already paying it in some way and it equals out to an entire salary for a resident. And they can come in and they can pay by check or can they still mail a check?
Right, they can still mail a check.
So you can mail a check from your home and have it, have it come through here from your bank account and not get charged any fee and still do it from your mailbox. So I can walk to my driveway and put it in the mailbox. So I would say that the charge for the credit cards should be the, I believe you were saying 3% that we already pay, that is already being paid by the residents, just not, you know, to Visa or whoever, so that we can, you know. Yeah, that's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we, we sum this up to provide some direction for city staff? Okay, so we've got, looks like three items here for that number two item regarding the convenience fees and what to do with them. So we have some council members who are saying that they would like the city to continue to absorb the fees, so status quo. We have some individuals that are in favor of the city's recommendation, which is to charge the 1.5% fee for e-checks, the, the 3% for credit cards and to not charge any fees for any individuals that physically come into the, into City Hall for payment. And then, and I guess one point of clarification is if there's a check that's sent and someone's not physically at the counter for cashiering, would that also then be exempt from the fees?
Right, so if they mail it or put it in the drop box, we still consider that at City Hall. It's processed by the cashier. So it'd be exempt from the fee.
So then Director Tockington, to Alderman Kohler's point, we would not necessarily be utilizing any additional resources as far as processing a, a physical interaction or having a line here at City Hall for any mail-ins?
No, so the mail-ins we pick up, essentially the mail comes and in the mornings, usually when we're slower in the mornings, is when all the mail and Dropbox gets processed, but that you can simply go to the side when we do have people at the window. And we actually do have, if there's so many that we can't process, we do have the lockbox that they will process access for us, but we've been using that less and less because we do have the ability, now that we have the full-time cashier, to handle that in-house.
Okay. So then to clarify, for the second option, it's to pursue the, the city's recommendation here, which is expand the 3% convenience fee to everything with the two exceptions listed on the slide here. And then the third recommendation that we have here for, or direction that we have from the council is to provide a, no convenience fee at all for,
E-checks.
For e-checks. So instead of the 1.5% charge, to eliminate that charge. I guess some clarification, Alderman Kohler. For, for the recommendation, are you in favor of pursuing the 3% convenience fee for other transactions and just eliminating the 1.5% fee?
I wouldn't be, I, I don't like the convenience fee, but I would be, I would accept that if we had an option for them that is something less than coming into City Hall and standing in line to pay your checks. If we had that other option, I could do the 3% because the option to do e-checks or debit card would say, okay, I have a way to get around this.
Okay, so then the third option is to allow for an electronic convenient form of paying from home without a paper check. And to have the exemptions be with debit cards pursuant to some research. I know that Visa and Mastercard, for example, they might just use the debit card and charge it as a credit card, even though it's a debit card. So we'll need additional information on that, but then pursuing the e-check. So it's the recommendation from the city minus that charge for reduced 1.5% fee that will then be decreased to zero. So once again, we got three options. We've got the status quo, we have the recommendation from the city, and then the third is the recommendation of the city, but change e-checks to 0%. I will have a straw vote for status quo first and then Alderman Budmats, I'm going to then ask for a yes or no verbally from you, once we have the straw vote for the status quo. So first, all those in favor of the status quo? Alderman Budmats, there are no hands raised here. Are you a yes or no for the status quo?
No.
Okay, so status quo's out. Moving on to the second, which is the recommendation of the city. All those in favor of pursuing the recommendations per staff? Also no hands here. Alderman Budmats, are you a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, we have one yes. And then the third option is the city recommendation, but change the e-checks to a 0% fee. All those in favor? I have all hand, five hands up here. Alderman Budmats, are you a yes or no for that third item?
I can go yes for two, but I, I was not holding a yes home for this because I know it requires further information, so.
Okay.
I'll go along.
Okay, so we have some direction then, city staff. We need some additional information on providing a convenient electronic form to pay that does not incur a convenience fee.
Great, thank you very much.
Of course. Any other questions from staff regarding that item? Nope, okay. Very well, then we will move on to item two, which is regarding the Human Services Department, Status Update and Planning. And for that, I will defer to our Human Services Director, Dr. Natalia Nieves, who will have a PowerPoint presentation for the council this evening. And then, Dr. Nieves, would you like to present the presentation in, in whole and then allow for questions at the end? Or would you prefer the city, I'm sorry, would you prefer the council to be able to respond as you're presenting?
I suppose I can take questions as I go.
As they come? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents, and staff. I am Natalia Nieves and I'm the Director of our Human Services Department. We're going to cover a little bit about what it's been like to have and build a Human Services Department. I'm going to explain a little bit about our referral process, share some updates about each division, tell you about our Neighborhood Resource Center and Health Fund and some of the achievements that we have accomplished and highlight some newly identified needs and discuss next steps. So someone once shared with me this story about a swan and how when you see the swan, they just look so peaceful and so smooth and underneath there is some very serious heavy paddling that you don't see. And so I just really identified with, with that as we are building, have been, you know, building this, this Human Services Department for the past six months or so. And so really the hope is that we can convey and, and really have a great client-centered, trauma-informed, welcoming, open-minded, accessible and safe space for all our residents to heal, grow and cope with the challenges and changes that come about with life, right? And so really I just wanted to point that out, that it's been a very eye-opening experience to, to start from scratch in a department of human services. So from figuring out triaging phone calls to creating a waiting room for, for our department, a peaceful space for persons in crisis to have a space to meet at and grant writing, grant reporting, dissemination of information, then policy creations and websites and business cards. So I just, just wanted to, to share a bit of my experience. Like I feel like sometimes it looks like this swan at times. So how does one get to us? Anyone really can make a referral to our team, to our department. A concerned family member, friend, neighbor, first responder, clergy, teacher, themselves, an anonymous person. And so what happens is, and they can do that by phone, by email, and any other really way. They can send us a letter. I've, I've actually gotten a letter before. So, um, and, and then the referral will give us some basic information about the resident. We'll, we'll establish that the person is a resident. And then they'll get to work with a primary staff member, right? So either the police social services outreach specialist, or mental health therapist, or community social worker. And then the different, there's a lot of cross collaboration. Those arrows can go back and forth at times. We've spent basically this entire time, this past six months, building and we're still building a really robust database and network to, to receive referrals. So that's the way that people can send us referrals is through scanning a QR code, which we've spent a lot of time sharing with the community. Our business cards, the back of our business cards have these QR codes where people can, can send us referrals. And everything is anonymous and the only thing we'll have to mature that to live here. And so we will go ahead and, and follow up with, with such referral. It's a very modern process, but we'll take, we're taking phone calls as well. And so just briefly to introduce the team, it's a, it's a wonderful team that we've been able to, to build and people that really have a lot of passion for, for this work and a lot of cross collaboration. Familiar faces that sitting here. So lots of experience, lots of professionalism. And I'm just really grateful that, that they're here to, to serve alongside me. So we have these three subdivisions, community, social services, police, and mental health. And I think that many of you are very familiar with what we do in this presentation. Part of this presentation has been, I have shared before. It is important to note that this person is both at City Hall and at our Community Resource Center. But primarily she is at the Resource Center and that's been really fruitful to have someone consistently there. Mainly this person connects with resources within the community and linkage and helping just people figuring out what they need to make their lives a little bit easier as, as transitions happen. From aging to needing medical care, to needing jobs or financial emergency, financial assistance, et cetera. And so at the Resource Center, which has really been very busy trying to do some, some robust programming, better than we had before, more consistent and, and it's, it's, some of them just work and so we keep going. Like the food pantry, we've also enhanced financial literacy programs. We just had a series of workshops, three different courses for financial literacy and about 10 people participated each time. So they really got some, some good information. We have monthly computer literacy programs and digital equity. That's a partnership with the library and that's well-attended. We also have a weekly police community building opportunity where an officer, Officer Soto comes and, you know, hangs, hangs out with the youth and, and with us and it's just really wonderful opportunity to, to make those connections. We've also held several mental health first aid courses, in Spanish and in English. This year, we've trained 30 people in, in mental health first aid and hoping for more. And in the fall, a health and flu shot clinic will, will also take place. With this new system, while it's perfect, because we're still building, we've been able to log this particular, in, in community social work arena, we've been able to log 527 direct, that's face-to-face client contact hours. Twenty-seven of those have been in different types of advocacy, not related to court advocacy. That's a different place of advocacy with medical, with social security, with education or any other need. And then case management per se, I spent 118 hours, 142 in women's group and 240 in summer camp. So to illustrate a little bit of what this has actually looks like, our community social worker corresponded recently with police, fire and community development to a situation involving a senior resident. The senior resident appeared disoriented and so the fire department assisted with transitioning them to the hospital for, for treatment. And our social worker did a lot more research on, on the family along with the assistance of police and worked together to figure out who else can help. And so she was able to locate power of attorney that lived at a state actually. And she was a liaison to collaborate and cooperate to make sure that this person got the support they needed. So a hospital social worker was involved, our building inspector as well, and the resident's adult child. Ultimately, the resident needed long-term care at a situation that wasn't their home. And so, you know, the, the amount of hours wasn't necessarily quantified, but, and the expertise in knowing who to connect with to make sure that this person, someone was in charge of supporting them is, is what our community social worker was able to take the lead. So that's an example. It's a lot of multi-disciplines involved. The other example is around, you know, this, our staff is just sitting at the, the Neighborhood Resource Center and someone walks in saying, I, I need help with school registration. And so as they're talking and learning more about the situation, it ends up that this person had a lot of complex needs. So she, she learned that the, the resident was losing their eyesight rapidly, had limited English proficiency and really needed assistance appealing the decision regarding social security benefits for their child that has a disability. And so they spent lots of time navigating the systems and advocating, even though the client had gone to the social security office in person, it didn't yield minute results. So our community social worker connected with the administrative staff and worked together to, to assist with this process. The client continued to seek out the support because now she trusts, now she knows that this is someone that is helpful. And so when the link card was stolen and their child needed medical insurance, the, the client knew to, to turn to our community social worker. And it's, it's really inspiring to see that now this person refers to the social workers, my social worker. So it feels, it feels good to have, to know that someone is looking out for you. And I asked each staff member to give me a comment as to their experiences far. And the staff indicated that it is tremendous rewarding and humbling to see how much the residents appreciate the opportunities created for them by our department. I also wanted to take a minute to highlight our summer camp. While I've been, we've been having summer camp for 11 years. This year, we, with the, the grant funding that we got, we were able to really do a lot more. And I'm excited to, to share that we were able to hire four seasonal staff to assist with camp. We were, our community social worker was with the camp youth the entire time. We also got to steal Officer Soto, so grateful, and another volunteer that consistently joined us. And the registration for summer camp happened during monthly food pantry, so really impacting those that needed the most. We were able to accommodate 45 youths of ages eight to 14. It's kind of funny because we used to cap it at 12, but then the 13 and 14 year olds kept asking to join and so we said yes, why not? They want to be here, why not? We did six weeks today, this week is the last week. And very field trip based, they got to visit police, fire, public works, a, a local zoo, arcade, the pool. This is the first year we got to actually have pool. uh, the pool. This is the first year we got to actually have pool le- uh, swimming lessons. The majority of these children don't get to have swim lessons. And so we had weekly swim lessons every Friday and it was, it was really wonderful. Another thing we did that's different this year is that we took the parents to Harvard College to learn about their, their summer camp. And um, for the, the youth that were most, that were consistently present and committed to continue with the program, uh, using the, the grant, we're, we're gonna pay for eighteen of these children to attend um, two weeks of Har- Harper STEM camps. And so just very um, opening some of the horizons for these youths, for the youth. A lot of collaborations happened for this to, are taking place for this to happen, but this is the, the result. Very exciting for us. So now I get to tell you about police social services, which you're probably well versed in as well. But we continue to do uh, really strong advocacy and um, co-respons with uh, police. Um, lots of criminal and civil orders of protection, uh, stalking of contact orders and, and civil no contact orders. We um, assist with uh, just a lot of cross collaboration with multiple disciplines, even within the field like the state's attorney's office, elder abuse, the department of children and family services, uh, participate in a lot of community outreach events just to be present. And um, we evaluate and, and work with uh, chief for the U D S certifications as well. Uh, this, this particular program is a lot of indirect hours, but we were able to um, capture a hundred and ninety-seven direct client contact hours. A hundred and seventy-nine of those are legal uh, court advocacy, ten of crisis support and aid assisting unhoused individuals. So this uh, case example is um, it's kind of deep in my heart because I, I, it's a family that um, I've known for a while, but it was nice to be able to, to support from, at a different level. Unfortunately, this non-offending parent reached out upon learning that uh, three of his children were um, victims of sexual abuse. And they had also witnessed domestic violence at home. And um, this, this non-offending parent became kind of like an instant uh, full supporter um, in, in custody. Uh, had full custody of the, of the children immediately. And so they had no food, no proper clothing, no furniture at this home because the home wasn't set up for, for all these children. Um, this, this was the non-custodial parent. And so um, this one, we actually ended up being able to use HO fund to assist with the immediacy, the immediate financial needs. Um, and went to court and petitioned for a uh, civil no contact order to protect the children because the other parent was sexually supportive of the offender versus uh, the, the youth. And so lots of barriers, this person could not inform, afford a, a family law attorney. So we did some advocacy and connected with uh, an agency that we literally did, I was like, I'm begging for you to take this case because they were not taking cases in, in our um, courthouse, they were taking cases in Chicago, only, but they took it. Um, and um, so lots of layers, right? Like I just want to il- illustrate the level of complexity that these cases bring about. That I can give you, you know, direct contact hours and, and as many, we can capture as many statistics as, as we possibly can. But to really highlight how, yeah, how much these, these cases need some support is um, is better with the case example. And our police social services outreach specialist said that it is a privilege to facilitate and create a safe space where survivors feel seen and supported. I echo that. And lastly, our mental health division. This um, this particular, we spend uh, a lot of time making sure that all the people that are in crisis, all the people that come with, with trauma, mental health, substance use, um, relapse prevent, relapse prevention. Um, in addition, they're, they have therapeutic services, right? And they have consults and they have uh, a little bit of de-stigmatizing. So um, coordination of the mental health first aid happens here, coordination of services with Dr. Chavez. Uh, and for psychiatric care, care and case consultations um, also take place within this subdivision. A lot of advocacy with individuals involved in mental health court, individuals should be involved in the mental health court. We also assisted with that, um, mental health warrants, um, and uh, follow-up with referrals. When the referral comes from uh, police, fire, whoever sends us the referral and it seems like it's more related to mental health, um, or mental health clinician is the one that initiates the contact and follows up and says, I'm here, I, I work for the city, it's free. And um, and it's, it's been busy, our um, well, I'll tell you the numbers in a minute. And then we also uh, have really enjoyed the partnership with Dr. Chavez. And um, while he is uh, limited to psychiatric support, um, it would be, in the future, be worth considering uh, expanding to some primary care. And so the mental health clinician has logged three hundred direct client contact hours, so that's lots of face-to-face. In ninety-eighting co-facilitation of programs, we all, uh, all the team is cross-trained and everybody is on call twenty-four seven. Well, one, one, one of the team members is on call twenty-four seven, uh, someone's always on call. Um, and so she's also done um, a hundred and thirteen hours of um, mental health treatment, uh, sixty-six hours of case management advocacy and twenty-three hours of intake and mental health consultation. Uh, this is uh, another example. So this client, let's call her Jane, is a senior long-term resident. She saw in the newsletter that there's this human services department and um, and she called indicating that she really wanted some help for her son who was struggling with, with addiction. And so um, we, we offered her a consultation, you know, sat with her. And upon learning that really the son wasn't interested in services and you cannot force people for, for substance abuse treatment, the refocus was on, oh, how about you? How are you coping with this, right? And so we were able to offer therapeutic support for, for Jane and um, and she's continued to, to be present and um, receive some, some good education as to why, what can she do, right? The locus of control and how can she support while maintaining healthy boundary and also maintaining her sta- her, her wellness. Um, in fact, we also uh, involved our police social services to do a consultation around the possibility of her protective order if things became too unsafe. So that's a little bit of cross collaboration. Our staff said that sometimes eh, we are a person's first experience with a non-dutemetal-supported professional. It is an honor to be that person for our clients, see in our department as a part of the services that city offers in their own backyard, both at city hall and the neighborhood resource center, lessens the shame of seeking help. And I think that's a lot of what we're doing, where a lot of de-stigmatizing and, and de-shaming help-seeking behaviors. So we're kind of everywhere we want to be, we want to be present and, and demonstrate um, that we're here to support. So we've recently modeled at a fashion show for seniors. Um, we've done presentations at schools uh, for what is human services and each, what we do there and why. Um, family services day, uh, with the, uh, large resource fair in our own backyard there, right outside of the resource center. We're present at the block party for the police. And uh, we are present at bar district events for community cleanup day. Uh, we participated in Hartford information exchange. We were at senior day for Oak Street uh, two weeks ago. We were at the Fourth of July parade and um, and uh, will be a national night out. That was fun, I confess. That was the Fourth of July. Um, we have built a really strong coalition with the Rolling Meadows partners where we meet every, every other month or so. We did a little bit less in the summer and we discuss needs, discuss um, creative programmings. And um, it's just a really strong way to, to have the stakeholders and people that are committed to supporting Rolling Meadows. I believe I mentioned the financial empowerment workshop. And we recently in May launched the emergency financial assistance program. And um, I mentioned the enhanced uh, summer camp experiences for youth. Here's just some flyers of what we've been doing. We've been consistently having uh, conversations in English at the resource center. We do hope for more, but um, coming soon. Um, those are some of the flyers, pretty great flyers. And that was the family services day. I don't know how many people attended, but it was, I believe, well over five hundred. And so recently, very, very new, we just uh, did a partnership with um, with this housing. Uh, and they have a handyman program for seniors where no one will pay more than forty dollars an hour for res- for um, pretty helpful home maintenance um, repairs. And they do require uh, that the person is sixty years of older or older and they do respond pretty fast, but they say no emergencies. And even more exciting program for me is, because this hasn't uh, been in place before, is the aging in place support. And so people that are sixty-two or, or older or have a disability uh, will be assessed by a nurse and a recreational therapist. And um, they will be able to do modifications for the home, uh, installing um, medical adaptive equipment. Just um, eighty-eight toilets and um, sinks, grab bars, chairlifts. And, and it is completely free, based, based on income though. So they do have to qualify based on income. So this is some of the examples and then the um, criteria for uh, qualifying. Continue to, to observe a lot of stigma around mental health, but we're hope to continue to really work on um, these stigma fi- you know, the, the, fighting that stigma and demystify it, demystify treatment. I think that it's a, it's a process, right? Um, we'll continue to offer mental health first aid, we'll continue to be present and having conversations and dialogues. We have also seen an uptick in, in grief and loss um, issues, especially post-COVID. Um, a lot of uh, crisis situations with uh, folks struggling with not having a home, um, and the limited resources there. Uh, and really limited programs targeting older adults with a preventative emphasis. Um, uh, I believe that there is a social isolation crisis for older adults that are facing. Um, this, our senior center focuses on, on recreation. However, there's uh, a little bit more of a need for targeted programs for overall wellness and especially emotional health, brain education, memory exercises, uh, spaces to talk about and normalize grief and changes associated with aging, as well as caregivers, you know, caregiver support groups. Um, another uh, needs that have come up, uh, there, there is sent anyone that will do lawn care and transportation, uh, needs are, are um, and accompaniment to, to appointments for medical or errands is, is limited. Um, assistance with finding affordable caregivers or homemaker programs is, is limited, uh, and as well as, as housing. Um, and for people that rent, aging in place programs are basically non-existent. The one that we ha- we have just did this partnership is for owners. Um, another potential situation that's going to happen pretty soon is our local adult protective services for this area will no longer be local. Um, and so I'm not sure what's, what's gonna happen uh, with uh, adult protective services, specifically for Palatine Township. Um, but we will continue to obviously work with our, you know, our prime victims through our police social service program, but we don't have that specific um, local area agency. Um, we love everything we do at our resource center, but there are some serious space limitations. It is a very, very tiny office, I'll just kind of sum it at that. And, but we do our best, right? Like it would be wonderful to have a space that has more rooms to, to run programs concurrently or perhaps programs that house the youth in a particular area and the adults and others, but those are goals. And so I, I also want to take a minute to tell you about HO fund. Um, uh, just, it's a small fund, but impactful. Recently, we have helped um, someone with uh, emergency furniture. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we s- also helped someone um, whose uh, family member was diagnosed with a terminal illness and really needed assistance with the rent. Um, and also um, mortgage uh, payment in, in an emergency basis for survivor domestic violence. Our fundraising efforts have been really limited, um, but hopefully not for long because we are planning a fundraiser. Uh, we just went ahead and decided on a date, got a location and got a really wonderful uh, fundraising committee. So look out for the invitation, but that is officially an invitation for um, our luncheon that we'll be having on October tenth. Next steps for, for me are just uh, really coming up with a strategic plan with the timeline, uh, seeking community uh, input and engagement, feedback from community partners and of course internal feedback with um, other, from other departments. And of course, you all. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Neves. And uh, very impressive to not only have this department, uh, nascent department for the past six months, but not fully staffed for um, for only five months, really. Uh, with that, Alderman Budmats, I will turn to you after I ask if there are any questions or comments uh, with the physical quorum present. Uh, with that, any comments or questions regarding the social services department for twenty twenty-four from anyone here? Yes, Alderman Boucher first.
Um, I would just like to thank you again for everything um, that you do for the city. Especially um, Ward Five is a heavy user of your human services department and services. And I know it has made a huge impact on the lives of families in my ward who don't have anybody else to speak for them or to stand for them when they don't know where to go. So I appreciate all of the hard work that your whole team puts in. And your human services day was amazing. Um, the kids are all having a great time, so thank you for everything that you guys do. I know it's sometimes thankless, but it's appreciated.
Thank you. Alderman Kohler?
First of all, great progress in the short time that you have the department, so I'm really impressed with what you're doing. Um, a couple of things, uh, kind of feedback to you, um, I, even though I think you're doing a tremendous job. Um, when I look up the services we offer on the website, I think we could expand that, just give it. Um, and the other thing that always bothers me in this is we are, we don't have a bilingual page. Considering the fact that we're a very diverse community, we should have bilingual page, especially for this department. Um, so I'd like to see uh, that focus. Um, the other thing is you had a long list of kind of future things or what the current needs are. Um, the, the council's backing you a hundred percent, I'm convinced of that. Of those specific ones, if we can get a strategy for how we can focus on those and get those in to our plans, that would be great because I think this is a great, great program, great opportunity. Um, and look forward to continuing to support your group. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Kohler. Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo on what my peers said, um, all the great work in the short time. I do just have a question, I know we've talked about beforehand, is yes, while the service is free to the recipients, it's, it's not. As I mean, our bills on warrant tonight, we're approving nine hundred dollars for the food pantry. I mean, just in full transparency, we also did increase the sales tax on certain items by a quarter of a percent to fund this going forward. So I just want to, I know there's a process in place and I'm probably sounding like a broken record. As Alderman Kohler said, I'm in full support of this. I was literally at first, but the data came, it was presented. Uh, mental health is a huge item, that's a crisis. I mean, it's a United States crisis from a healthcare perspective. What, cause this has been so successful, what my worry is, it's the first time in the write-up tonight, I've seen reference to unhoused. I think there was eight individuals we helped with, as well as a women's migrant group. I'm just going straight off the definition of a textbook. Is migrant somebody's moving from one location to the other for better life or better work? I really just want to reiterate how we handle those to make sure it's going to residents of Rolling Meadows. It's an extremely start to a successful program. My worry is word's gonna spread like wildfire how successful it is and we're not gonna only be serving Rolling Meadows residents. That's my concern. But no, fully supportive, just to make sure we keep at the forefront of our mind that it is residents of Rolling Meadows. We are supporting whether it's the food pantry that we recently approved more financial assistance to, or any other great services. Thank you.
I can I can tell you a little bit more. Uh the migrant group is anybody that we service, including the groups or the food pantry, has to be registered within our fancy new system with the QR codes and everything, and everybody has to have a local address to be serviced by us.
Great, perfect. I appreciate the the confirmation. That's my only my only ask, as you're probably well aware of over the last several topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Budmats, any questions or comments for staff?
No, I just echo that of my peers that it's wonderful to see how this is coming together, and it's and it's six months. It's it's a great, it's a it's a great, um we appreciate the update, and um and we want to be continue to be um notified, and and the numbers help us to justify the continuation of the program. So thank you very much for the informative um um discussion.
My pleasure.
Thank you. If no questions or comments, um then I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Uh will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-four PM. Will it take five minutes?
Take a five-minute break?
Yep, five minutes. Just checking and make sure that we are. All right, looks like we are live and starting. Uh good evening and welcome to the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four City Council Meeting. This meeting is hereby called to order at seven forty-one PM. Please join uh join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail?
Here.
Budmats? Oh, O'Brien?
Here.
Beniziano's absent. Boucher?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Kohler?
Present.
With five physically present and two absent, there is a physical quorum. Uh we have a request from Alderman Budmats, who has presented this evening from attending the meeting in person due to a personal illness or disability, uh and he has requested to attend the meeting remotely pursuant to section two dash one fourteen of the city code. As such, at this time, I would like to call for a motion to permit Alderman Budmats to attend this evening's remotely. Is there such a motion?
It's removed.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, Alderman Budmats is permitted to attend remotely. Alderman Budmats will be able to participate in the meeting in the same capacity as those members physically present and will be called and counted for any vote taken during the meeting. Uh Alderman Budmats, are you on the line and are you able to hear us?
Are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's YouTube channel. And again, all votes must be taken by roll call due to the uh blended uh the blended attendance this evening. Our first order of business is to approve minutes from our two previous meetings, and the first is the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So thank you, Alderman Mikail for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yeah.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the minutes are approved. Likewise, we have our June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting minutes that also need to be approved. Is there an Alderman who is wish- willing to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Thank you, Alderman Kohler for the first, and Alderman Reyes for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Hearing, yes.
Uh thank you. I had already been in touch with Judy. There was one correction on the gaming cafe item. It was a just a confirmation that I was not in support of the amended ordinance. The vote was correct, but the wording, Judy and I had a, we connected earlier today, so that's a slight correction on the wording.
Duly noted. Thank you. Any other corrections, additions, or deletions for the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, uh will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yeah.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the minutes are approved. We have two presentations this evening, and we will begin first with our twenty twenty-three Goldwater Ambassador Award Presentation. And to that, I will defer to Public Works Director Erin Grosskopf for the introduction.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Um at this point, I'm going to go ahead and defer to our utility supervisor, Ryan Revard, uh who has worked very diligently and hard and has received this award now. I think this is our second or third year in a row. So it's very exciting, uh so I will now pass it along to him.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, residents, and friends. Um today, we have the distinct honor of having Lauren Morgan, uh with the ISAWWA Outreach Specialist here to help give you a little bit more information with the Water Ambassador Program and what we did to achieve. And I'll come on back and kind of give you a little overview of what we did throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. We do have a video clip. I believe it's it's queued and ready to go. Uh ISAWWA, or the Illinois Section of the American Water Works Association, uh is a statewide organization that supports affordable, sustainable uh water sources. We deal with communities, we deal with schools, we deal with people who work in water, providing trainings, workshops, um and outreach. We have twenty-four hundred members, but AWWA, the actual section, um is both national and international. To give you some perspective here, um what the program is for Water Ambassadors is quite impressive. ISAWWA Water Ambassador Program was created to elevate public perception, knowledge, and consumer education of the water industry. The program aims to accomplish these goals by presenting a new communication platform of educational and promotional content in a manner that is relevant and engaging and consistent among participants across the state. How it works, participating members can actually access our water education from our website, which we have curated all kinds of different things, from filling inserts to social media posts on Hug a Plumber Day. It's quite fun, and I'll have Mr. Revard talk about exactly what he did for your community after our video clip. There are three levels of the award, our bronze, silver, and gold. And of course, you are the recipient of the highest honor, the Gold Award. This year, we're awarding twenty-one gold lover, gold level water ambassadors and one silver throughout the state. So you're part of twenty-one recipients statewide. And I just wanna thank you, uh to your community and to Mr. Revard, Public Works, the Water Department, for all that they do for their community in educating both uh elected officials and residents of Rolling Meadows to maintain safe and sustainable water for all. How about the video?
We're getting it queued up. Yes.
Okay, 'cause it's weird to save myself on video.
Fabulous. Thank you. Uh Brian, feel free to continue.
Lauren, thank you so much for kind of giving an overview of what the Water Ambassador Program is all about. Uh we appreciate and are very humbled by the gold certification for third year in a row. Uh a couple of things we've done throughout the year, uh with the public outreach, we work with social media, uh our city website, newsletters, the Consumer Confidence Report, putting information of the elected officials for our last biweekly that came through staff. Uh just to kind of give you a kind of a broad view of Water One, Two, Three, of what our state of, basically the union of the water resources that we have, uh as well as things that we're looking to accomplish and do. Value of water, industry understanding, and miscellaneous water utility information. We post this through social media, again, the uh the website, newsletter, and CCR throughout the year to try to give a little bit more elevation to utilities and the water industry as a collective. So that's something that we've done, and again, we are very humbled to receive this award, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And here's the official street sign. And your certificate.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we need the picture to be a next year's slideshow, just like this year, right?
Thank you again, and congratulations uh to our Public Works Department and our Water Division for making sure that we are being recognized for our efforts, especially when it comes to making sure that we have clean and accessible and sustainable water sources. With that, we will move on to our Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three Audit Presentation, and for that, I'm going to defer to Finance Director Molly Tockington for an introduction of our um counterparts at Lauterbeck and Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, tonight, we're gonna go over the fi- uh Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three Audit Presentation, and Mckay Thorpe is here from Lauterbeck and Amen to run through some highlights for you.
Thanks, Mr. Thorpe. Please approach.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the board for allowing us once again to be your auditors and for allowing me to present tonight. Um so and to introduce myself, my name is Mckay Thorpe. I am an audit manager of Lauterbeck and Amen. Um I've been lucky to be on Rolling Meadows Audit for the past three years as manager, and I presented the financials last year, so it's always great coming back here. Molly and her team make our lives very easy, which we appreciate. So thank you to Molly, Shelley, um and all the finance team. Um they're typical nine-to-five jobs still go on. We come in, we add more stress to their plate, so the fact that they are always We come in, we add more stress to their plate, so the fact that they are always well-prepared, um, and answer our questions, um, in timely and well-thought-out manners, we greatly appreciate. So thank you again for another successful audit. So, we're going to begin going through the big booklets that we have. Looks like perfect, everyone's on PDF. So, the first page we're going to go to is page number nine. All right, there we go. So, once again, congratulations to the City of Rolling Meadows for receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two year. Um, this is consistent with having an award won for many years. Um, and also, we are in the process, we have, uh, sent the twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three financials, um, to be reviewed for this award, um, which we will help Molly if there's any questions that come from, uh, the facility. So the next page we will go to now is page number twelve. And this is your audit opinion for twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three fiscal year. And once again, uh, City of Rolling Meadows has received an unmodified opinion. Uh, this is the highest opinion that we can provide as your auditors. Um, and what this is saying is for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, through our testing, uh, we found that the financials are free of any material misstatements. Uh, there's no significant or material weaknesses, um, within the internal controls, so. Congratulations, once again, on receiving that opinion, um, which is what has consistently been received in the past. So moving on to page number eighteen, this is the beginning of your Management's Discussion and Analysis Section. Um, so what these next pages essentially do is they kind of provide more of a narrative, um, for the past fiscal year. What we do is we fill in the numbers, um, and then we send to Molly and her and her team are able to go in and explain in their own words, uh, why certain, uh, figures increased or decreased, um, throughout the year. And there's also some more charts and graphs in there, too, for more of a visual learner, um, within the section as compared to hard accounting, uh, wording. So moving on to page number thirty-nine. This is the beginning of your financial statements, uh, which this page is the governmental activities and business-type activities, uh, level for your balance sheet, so your assets, deferred inflows, outflows, and your liabilities. And you flip over to the next page, page forty-one. Uh, once again, this is your governmental activities, business-type activities level, uh, but from the income statement side, so your revenues and expenditures. And then you keep flipping to page number forty-three. Uh, this is the balance sheets, assets, liabilities, deferred inflows, uh, but now at a fund level. So we have the general motorfield tax, debt service, um, and it goes on and on. Uh, so, and then also, if you flip over to page forty-seven, this is once again the fund level, but from the income statement side, revenues, expenditures, and then it goes to your ending fund balance. Uh, so kind of what information can you get from here? Um, you can see in the general fund, for example, there was about a one-point-two million increase or about eight percent. Um, so these are just kind of information you can kind of look to see where, where it was at the beginning of the year and where it's at at the end of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. And then if we, so now if you flip to page fifty-eight, this is the beginning of your notes to the financial statement. Um, so very dense material, um, in, in these next few pages. It kind of dives more into what our, uh, testing procedures were, uh, when performing the audit, and looks at it defines what methodologies are used by the City of Rolling Meadows, uh, when putting together the finances. Um, so kind of information that you can get from here is there's a section on capital assets, so you can look to see, um, how the dollar value of the assets, so vehicles, buildings, improvements that are, that are done, uh, that the City of Rolling Meadows currently has. And then also, there's a section for long-term debt, where you can look to see, um, what kind of debt is open and what the principal balances are and what is left to be paid. So, kind of more hard numbers, um, within these sections, um, as compared to the Management Discussion Analysis, where it's more of a narrative, more of a story, um, kind of explanation of the financials. And then last section is page one twenty-nine. This is going to be a similar layout of the income statement, so it starts with revenues and expenditures. Uh, but now you'll see that there's three columns, uh, one titled Original, one titled Final, and one titled Actual. The original is your original budget, so what was passed, um, at the beginning of the year with the original budget. Then the final is the amended budget, and then the actual is the actual as of year-end, what the, uh, revenues or expenses were. So if you remember going back, we had about a one-point-two million increase in general fund. Uh, this is an area where you can kind of go through and see, okay, was there, uh, revenue that was higher than expected or expenditure that was lower than expected, that kind of caused the fund balance to increase. Um, also, these, this is applied to all the other funds, producing general fund here as an example. So I'm going to pause there before I dive into the management letter, or if you want me to go into the management letter, I can do that, too.
Uh, thank you. Are there any questions at this point with the sections that our auditor has presented this evening? Okay. Any questions, Alderman Bud Matts on the phone? Okay, then please continue with the management letter. Thank you.
So then the next section we'll go to is the title of the management letter, a little smaller booklet. Uh, so kind of give a brief background as to what a management letter is. These are just recommendations that Gazby, or the Government County Center Board, um, that relays to us that, um, municipalities should be doing, or recommendations that they have to make sure, um, operate at the highest efficiency. Um, so these aren't dings or anything, these are just recommendations that we have. So, uh, in the current year, there were two, uh, new current year recommendations. Uh, they both relate to, uh, new Gazby standards that will work with Molly and her team to help implement for next year. Um, there were five prior-year recommendations that were repeated, uh, which Molly has provided comments for. Um, and then there were two, uh, prior-year recommendations that were implemented during the year. Uh, so those will be removed from the management letter next year. And that is it for the management letter, so I'll pause there if there's some questions.
Thank you. Again, any questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay, none for our physical quorum. Um, Alderman Bud Matts, did you have any questions or comments on the phone? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that now brings us to our public hearing this evening. So the city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing regarding a Class G A liquor license for video gaming for Sabroso Burrito Three Incorporated, doing business as Los Dos Pollos Grill at twenty-two sixteen El Gonquin Road. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning a Class G A liquor license for video gaming for Sabroso Burrito Three Incorporated, doing business as Los Dos Pollos Grill at twenty-two sixteen El Gonquin Road. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at eight oh two PM on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we will then ask several times this evening if there is anyone that wishes to speak regarding a Class G A liquor license for video gaming for Sabroso Burrito Three Incorporated, doing business as Los Dos Pollos Grill at twenty-two sixteen El Gonquin Road. Um, if they have anything to speak, or if they request to speak, that they approach the podium. Uh, yes, please approach the podium, state your name.
I wasn't. I wasn't planning on this, but I know this family very well. And, uh, my name is Roxanne Summer. I live in the Saratoga condominiums. This is an incredible family. I asked them to do a, a presentation at my church, an outdoor concert. They came, they didn't charge me the thousand dollars that most food trucks cost. They're very generous to our community and very welcoming. I see no problem with this, this grant.
Thank you. And then I'll ask again if there's anyone that wishes to speak regarding a Class G A liquor license for video gaming for Sabroso Burrito Three Incorporated, doing business as Los Dos Pollos Grill at twenty-two sixteen El Gonquin Road. All right, let the record show, the public hearing closed at eight oh three PM on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This now brings us to the mayor's report, and this evening, I just wanted to, uh, mention that we had some wild weather last night with potentially over ten tornadoes in northern Illinois and northwest Indiana. The city's Public Works refuse team will be picking up any branches that are bundled and placed for collection for regular refuse pickup, as well as clearing debris from public right-of-ways. Um, if you have, uh, any fallen branches, trees, or other debris from last night's weather, um, in front of your home or in any public right-of-way, uh, feel free to reach out to Public Works directly, uh, and they can come and take a look. Their number is eight four seven nine six three zero five zero zero. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, um, Mayor, congratulations. The newest member of the seventh ward.
Thank you.
Antonio, Antonio Paulina Dominguez.
Thanks.
So congratulations on that. Uh, second thing I'd like to point out is, uh, this Saturday, uh, July twentieth, um, at Saint Mary's Coptic Church in the seventh ward along, um, front, west Frontage Road is Egypt Fest. And, uh, when I talked to them, they asked me to just put the word out there that this Saturday, they welcome the community to come join them for Egypt Fest. Uh, Saint Mary's is the Coptic Church, the Egyptian Orthodox Church in our community, and they would like to welcome everybody to their event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ward reports? Yes, Alderman Mikail.
Yes, um, there is a public hearing tomorrow in Schaumburg for the Lower Farms Development, and I just wanted to let residents know of the first and possibly seventh ward, that they are welcome to attend that meeting to find out more information about that proposed development at the Lower Farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ward reports? Yes.
Thank you. I had a resident reach out and, um, wanted to make sure that, um, that they will have the opportunity, that citizens would have the right to, you have an opportunity to vote on whether leaving our logo the same or making changes. So, um, just throwing that forward, um, that, uh, because it's not fair for the citizens to have a right to decide if there should be changes to the logo or not.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Any other ward reports this evening? All right. With that, uh, we do have signatories on the sign-in sheet for our public, uh, uh, our public hearing section, or I'm sorry, um, for public comment. Uh, prior to beginning public comment, I do want to ensure that we, uh, include some of the ground rules. So in order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified forum in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per Rules of Procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. First, any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the city council. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business, and comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner, which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. So with that, uh, the first individual on the signatory that I have here is Ms. Kelly. If you could please approach.
Thank you. Um, I'm Kelly Pfeiffer. Um, I own McLeo School of Dance. I'm a teacher at Carl Sandberg Junior High in Rolling Meadows for twenty-three years, and, um, I coach at Rolling Meadows High School, and I'm a Rolling Meadows resident. So I have a lot invested in Rolling Meadows. Um, I just wanted to quickly say, I know we're up for a special use, um, expansion, and I didn't know if I had to talk, so I just wanted to talk real fast and let you guys know. We opened our dance studio in Meadows right by Senior Tacos in two thousand and seven. Um, after that lease was up, we moved to Palatine for a short time, um, and then came back to Rolling Meadows in twenty fifteen in the current space we're in, which also needed a special use, um, for zoning or whatever. So the unit next door to us has now become available, and we're looking to expand to have a bigger studio room. Um, it's currently bigger than the ones that we have now, and when we started in twenty fifteen in that unit, we had a lot of younger kids and not as many older kids, and now I need more space for the kids that have stayed with us throughout. Um, and also some extra storage. We currently rent a storage unit, um, and it would be nice to have all our stuff with us, so we're not running multiple places to pick things up for recitals and stuff like that, so. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, too.
Thank you. When we have the item that comes up, uh, we'll s- see if the council wishes to ask. Thank you for being here. Uh, next is Ms. Alyssa.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alyssa Duda. I'm Rolling Meadows resident, and, uh, thank you very much for taking care of Rolling Meadows. Love Rolling Meadows, and, um, I came to speak about the logo. I'm an artist, so I care a little bit more than just like about aesthetics and colors and everything, so I was very involved in all the questionnaires and suggestions, and I was participating and was very surprised when, uh, we were left only with two options, um, not my favorite options. Uh, I, and I asked questions, uh, about who created those logos and never got serious answer from anybody, and I, I feel like we need to know because, um, three of them look AI-generated, and Rolling Meadows' name is very beautiful, and it has a meaning, and it had the meaning to people that name our city. And I think it's obvious that we should use Rolling Meadows' image, um, to represent us and connect all of us, not burnt street corner or just high school, you know, colors, uh, we need to be all connected. So, I t- I actually came to volunteers' meeting because I thought they are responsible for doing this, and they directed me here, and they all agreed with my opinion, and they think that we should stay with previous logo because what have we s- uh, brought to us, like on Facebook, uh, even on Facebook comments, I, I saw that people are not happy. And, um, I screenshot all of them, and I mean, I wrote emails on, on, to a couple of you, you probably know, and I asked those questions, and I don't know if, are we supposed to get answers? Do we get, uh, emails back? Do we get acknowledgement that we wrote an email and that we are important? Because I don't get that feeling. I, I really care, as you see. It's important to me. And I did study, like, many years. It's my hobby. I could read books on colors and, uh, you know, I I want to know more about who created that, uh, those logos, and, and the first logo was I, I want to know more about who created that, those logos. And the first logo was, I thought, really, really strong and good and modern, and it wasn't an option in the second voting, and I want to know what happened. Is there anyone that can answer?
So for public comment, this is just a one-way street. So you'll have your public comment, and then we can certainly have city staff then that can follow up with you.
Okay.
Okay.
So if, you know, we have only those two options, from what I was talking to everyone, you know, in, in volunteers, and everyone I know, and what I've read on Facebook, please don't change our logo, because those two options are not optional. They are so big and can be used for any town. And, and kind of the story went from, like, purple martin, which is only a summer thing, and, and I did research on what purple martin is, and it's sitting on a blade of grass, which is not realistic. So a person who did this did not care about, you know, this location, or people, or residents. And I'm not even talking about, you know, the duck, the farting duck that people are calling, because it was saying that it's in the shape of Rolling Meadows' map.
We've got fifteen seconds left.
And it's not, so it's insulting. It's, it's, it wasn't even close to Rolling Meadows' map. I mean, it's obvious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Ms. Roxanne.
Sorry, I'm so slow. It's a long day for me. First, I wanted to ask about the, what's going on with the electricity program that we're supposed to have? We didn't have it this year. I don't know who I should ask about that. The next thing I just wanted to say. If you see me coming, please don't run away. Let's see what we can do for all of our beautiful City of Rolling Meadows as a team. The thing about the logo, I agree. I think our logo current is wonderful, fantastic. And I want to build a stronger connection between the city, the park district, the library, and our churches. We need to have that better serve our residents. That's, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move on to our pending ordinances, which is item A, ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-six, which is to grant a special use for the expansion of an indoor athletic facility, dance studio, at thirty-eight eighty-nine A and thirty-eight eighty-nine B Industrial Avenue, known as Meglio School of Dance LLC. First, we do have a requested waiver of first reading. Is there any alderperson willing to make a motion to waive first reading? Yes, Alderun Kohler for the first, and Alderun Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding waiving first reading? Okay. Hearing none. The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and unopposed, the ordinance is moved forward for second reading, which brings it right back here for final approval. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So much.
Thank you, Alderun Boucher for the first, and Alderun O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of this ordinance? Hearing none. The question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us on to new business. We have item B, which is a motion to ratify the payment of bills on warrant for July second, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to ratify the warrant?
So much.
Thank you, Alderun Boucher for the first, and Alderun O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the ratification of the payment of bills on warrant? Hearing none. The question is, shall the warrant be ratified? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With six in favor and unopposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to item C, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So much.
Thank you, Alderun McHale for the first, and Alderun Boucher for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. The question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and unopposed, the warrant is approved. This now brings us to our consent resolutions, which consist of two items, items D and E. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? All right. Hearing none. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So much.
Thank you, Alderun McHale for the first, and Alderun Boucher for the second. Item D, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash sixty-three, is to waive the building permit fees for St. Klett Church at thirty-nine hundred Meadow Drive. And item E, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash sixty-four, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Arlington Heights for phase-two engineering services for the Euclid Avenue resurfacing project. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
With six in favor and unopposed, these resolutions are adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. There are no mayoral appointments or proclamations, no city clerk report. We do have some city staff reports, and as a reminder, there are no discussions during the city staff reports. For our community items of interest, I will defer to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three items of interest this evening. The first is that the fun continues this Friday with Friday's rock concerts in Kimble Hill Park. The community's welcome. Bring your lawn chair and blanket to enjoy the classic rock tunes from the opening band, Judson Brown Band, at six P M, and Radio Gaga at eight P M. Come hungry and try delicious fairs from popular food vendors with adult beverages served by Rep's Place. We thank our sponsor, Me Chicago Northwest, as well as the Rolling Meadows Park District, for sponsoring the opening bands and for use of their property. Second, the city's new event, Bites and Beats on Kirchhoff, our food truck event, will make the, continues to make the fourth Wednesday evenings more, more fun in Rolling Meadows from May to September. Next Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, will feature music from the Do-Right's and the Bart Attacks. Grab a bite from a flock of food trucks while tuning into a blend of eclectic musicians. The city-sponsored event will be held on the grounds of the Community Church at twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. Again, we thank the Community Church for their partnership. For the latest information and event updates, you can always visit the city's website at cityrn.org, or follow the city, excuse me, follow the city on Facebook.
Thank you. For our June two thousand and twenty-four new business report, I'll defer to our business development manager, Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce five new businesses for the month of June. Among them is Aqua Vitae Engineering, which is a green infrastructure engineering firm. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the draft agenda for the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Committee of the Whole, and as a reminder, during our summer schedule, we have the Committee of the Whole and the city council meetings on the same day. To that, I will defer to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Certainly. So I would highlight that on the Committee of the Whole agenda, there are three items. This is really the principal meeting, principal opportunity for the city council to discuss the, one of the principal meetings to discuss our five-year financial forecast, and really the shape and nature of the two thousand and twenty-five budget. We'll also be returning to a discussion of tobacco vape and CBD shop regulations, as well as the, the branding and logo concept update, last talked about by the city council in June. We'll be returning as well with additional public comment and feedback. I would note that when we last took a look, we received over eight hundred responses to that survey. I think the community is definitely paying attention to this topic, and I think we're getting some very good information from the additional outreach that the city council has us to engage in. Aside from that, again, I would emphasize, to your point, Madam Mayor, that this, we continue to be on the summer meeting schedule, and so our next meeting will be August twenty-seventh. These two draft agendas are, of course, drafts, and the final agendas will be posted prior to the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Excellent. And then similarly, if you could just walk us through the city council draft agenda as well, Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Certainly. So we'll have the swearing-in of some new officers with the city's police department, as well as giving some life-saving awards after today's public hearing. You'll be presented with an ordinance that would create a new class G A gaming accessory liquor license for Los Dos Pollos Grill at twenty-two sixteen Elgonquin Road, potentially depending on the outcome of a planning and zoning commission hearing. And during this time until your next meeting, you may be asked to consider a special use for community center park. They're proposing to make a number of improvements, such as pickleball courts, a mini golf court, and some other improvements funded by a state grant that require the city's zoning approval. And then there's just a number of resolutions on projects. We are in the process of bidding or awarding that we anticipate will be ready for action in your August meeting, including locker room improvements, water main design along Elgonquin Parkway, a booster station on Quentin Road, a space needs study for city facilities, some upgrades to parking lots and driveways for city facilities, and lighting for new squad cars. So of course, we bid and solicit proposals to do this work in accordance with the city's purchasing manner.
Thank you. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda that the council would wish to discuss? Yes, Alderun Boucher, and Alderun Kohler?
Um, the library had our first meeting with our new trustees this past week, and Attorney Wolf came and did a lovely presentation about Open Meeting Act and FOIA. So I think everyone kind of learned a lot about what's expected of open meetings, FOIA from the Rolling Meadows Library. Everyone got a packet, so hopefully, if there's any questions, we said we could get them back to Attorney Wolf. And then also, the Friends of the Library are hosting their summer book sale, starting Friday the nineteenth, going through Sunday the twenty-first. So it's a big fundraiser for them, so if you're looking for books, step on over to the library.
Thank you. Alderun Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just follow up on a comment that was made during the public comment section. I did receive some comments regarding the logo myself from some residents. I responded to each one of those, who did send me a note, and I also forwarded those to our city manager, the comments to city manager, and he did indicate those would be included in the feedback on the city's logo and branding projects. I do also want to say thank you to the resident who did come to tonight's meeting for providing that feedback, and asked the city clerk to segregate that comment and get it to Rob Sable for input to the logo project. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderun Kohler. Any other matters not on the agenda this evening? Okay. With that, there is a request to enter into closed session this evening, and so I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session, closed session under section two, C six of the Open Meetings Act regarding setting price for sale or lease of property. Do I have a motion?
So much.
Thank you, Alderun Boucher for the first, and Alderun O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding going into closed session this evening? Right. Hearing none. The question is whether we shall go into closed session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and unopposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Thank you.